We good?
I haven't heard that we are recording thing yet.
Well, because we don't have a recording yet, so we can start, but we wanna see if we can... She's kinda going through her credits to ensure that...
I was under the impression that Joshua was not going to be here.
Yeah, Nick said he would be.
Is Chris still on the commission?
Just technically, technically, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Just curious. Yeah, Nick said he would be here, so...
Oh, yes.
Um, is that for you? Then yeah.
And members of the commission?
Zoom in for me. Like they used to do during COVID. Only under certain circumstances in this place. Like if you have... Like if you have qualifying...
Qualifying reason if you're traveling on city business and/or you have a illness or a family member's illness keeps you from attending.
Okay. And then I think you have to like post outside of where you are. I don't know. I trust her on that. That would be hilarious. People wanna know where you're at.
You gotta go out show them.
If you vote this way, I'm going to your house. Okay.
No, that's not Disneyland.
That's why I just jerked off. No, no, no.
I'm zooming in from Hawaii because I wanna make my thirty dollars. That was hard during COVID because we'd... It was just because you don't have eye contact with people and it was kinda like people would talk and it was just an awkward time for... Well, everything, but to do Zoom for the planning commission was really weird. Because we would go to say something and then someone else was gonna say something. And you know Zoom, it kinda cancels you out, so it'd be a lot of like dead spots for a minute. Yeah. I was still working on... We were considered essential and... My, my business too was essential. I didn't close one minute. I got very lucky. It's because we do the IID devices for the state of California. So we are deemed essential, but car audio isn't essential. But the IIDs kept us open, so we got lucky. The interlock devices? Yeah, we've done Smart Start for like twelve years DUI program. Yeah, if you ever... Good God. Oh, Fortuna Audio, yes. Oh, did you bring me your resume? Was he an older guy like my husband? Real cute? Okay. Yes, then that's him. Oh, okay, that's what you were there for. Yeah. Yeah, I don't know how far they got to research that. I'm sorry. I've got my fingers crossed for the corner. Mr. Bennett, Commissioner Bennett's always here. I haven't even been home all day. I just got back from another meeting.
That's Harvey. It's pretty simple. This is one of the ages that you saw it and match all the other Burger Kings in the world? It'll work better than it does. Oh, God.
I haven't been in there. I feel so bad. No, I suck.
There he is.
Recording in progress.
All right. So apologies for being a little late, but we'll get this commission meeting started and we'll start with the flag salute.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Could we please start with a roll call?
Commissioner Bennett?
Here.
Commissioner Calkins?
Commissioner Howley?
Here.
Vice Chair Nichols?
Here.
Chair Kine?
Here. All right. So we'll start with oral comments from the public. Members of the public may be heard at this time on any object or item subject to the matter jurisdiction of the city. Please remember that if there is any items that are currently on the agenda, please hold your topic until then unless it is time particular. You'll have three minutes for anybody who would like to speak. Would anybody in the public like to speak or anybody online? Nobody on Zoom? All right. Then I will close public comment. Next portion will go to the consent calendar and start with the January 28 regular meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful. The next item on our list pertains to the approval of Burger King restaurant design review. Unfortunately, I will have to recuse myself, so I hope that Vice Chair Nichols will take over for me.
Do you have a paper on this or do I just wing it?
They'll, I've just been reading off of that, so, but.
No.
Should be good to go.
Hello. So we are going to go to item A, 4A, approved Burger King restaurant design review by adopting resolution P 2025 3123, and we probably have a staff report, Sherry.
It says sharing is not turned on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, you're correct. We're just waiting for the ability to share. Thank you. Okay, can everybody see my screen?
Yep.
Great, thank you. So, good evening, Vice Chair Nichols and honorable planning commissioners. I'd like to greet and welcome our alternate Rusty Calkins, who is stepping in today to help us make quorum, so thank you for being here. Look forward to your continued participa- participation on this board. As Commissioner Nichols, Vice Chair Nichols mentioned, we're here tonight to review and consider a design review application for the Burger King location at 925 South Fortuna Boulevard. I'm Sherry Meads, the Community Development Director, if I didn't already say that. So this is a pretty straightforward project. What it is, is to update an existing Burger King so that the facade has the same look as the latest corporate image standards. They're going to be upgrading the ADA path of travel. And also, due to some issues with residential uses nearby, they have agreed to do some shielding on some of the parking light posts. There are no changes proposed to the building size or compliance with parking, hours of operation, the drive-through itself, landscaping, or the trash or silvies. None of that is proposed to change. There are interior updates that are pretty exciting, but they are not subject to design review. So this shows on the map where the project is. We're probably all pretty familiar with it. It's right down there on South Fortuna Boulevard, across from Open Door Clinic and near the grocery markets. So the general plan land use for the Burger King location is corridor mixed use, and so this project, which even though it's not here for a use permit, we always want to go over the fact that it is consistent with the general plan land use because the CMU land use does anticipate this type of use, and there is no change or expansion of the use proposed. The zoning for the site is commercial thoroughfare, and because it is an existing restaurant, it is compatible with the CT zoning jurisdiction, which provides for retail, wholesale, highway, commercial, and other similar uses. Here you see the existing look of the Burger King, and like I said, we probably are all very familiar with what it looks like, some more than others here in the audience especially that live nearby. It's, you know, a little dated, so we're pretty excited about the proposed elevation changes. It will definitely update the look, modernize it by bringing in different color scheme, different, the use of different materials. You can see that the windows have changed a bit, and it should be noted that all signage will be under review under a separate sign permit. So what we see here is a big Whopper Burger King may or may not be approved based on the size and their ability to comply with the regulations. That'll come in separately. So here's another elevation from the parking lot. Again, you can see the use of different textures and colors. It just really does update the look. Again, the drive-through elevation is just an updated look. So there are certain required findings to approve design review, and I will briefly go over those. It, design review outline, the purpose of design review is to ensure, there's a lot of words here, but what matters for this project is to ensure that the alteration is consistent with the Fortuna general plan, which it is. Also to ensure that the design of the structures and their materials and colors are visually harmonious, harmonious with surrounding development, appropriate to the function of the project, and that it promotes harmonious transitions between different land uses. And this one I want to highlight that it absolutely improves the look and also will promote a more harmonious transition between this use and the residential uses by their willingness to add that shielding to the parking lot light poles. And the general plan also, and the Fortuna municipal code, all encourage the maintenance rehabilitation and improvement of existing buildings, which this does. And again, this notes that signage will be evaluated separately, ensuring that access to the property and circulation is safe and convenient. They are even upgrading the ADU accessible path of travel, so that is an extra benefit to this project. And then the municipal code also provides the scope of design review. What is it that we can evaluate? What do we need to look at? And it suggests that we try to avoid ugly, inharmonious, or monotonous design, and I would say that in this person's opinion, it definitely improves that, and again, improvements to existing buildings and site features. So the project was evaluated under the California Environmental Quality Act, and it is exempt under several different sections. Basically, there is really no chance that the project is going to have an effect on the environment, and also there are two other sections of CEQA that small alterations to projects or land also qualify for a, an exemption, which this project does. So staff recommends that the planning commission approve the project, and there is a little menu there for how we can proceed going forward, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. I should also mention that we do have the architects online if you have questions for them and the owner of the Burger King, so they don't have a presentation, but they are here if we have any specific questions that staff can't answer. Yep.
So, at this time, I believe that we're going to resea- open public comment. If there's anyone here that wants to come up and comment on this project, please do.
Hello, commissioners and city staff members. Thank you for your time. My name is Dr. Katerina Kine, and I am one of the three property owners. We call ourselves the 900 neighborhoods, and we abut the Burger King property. I do want to share what the reality of living next to this property is like. First and foremost, we suffer from air pollution. There's a steady stream of black smoke due to restaurant emissions coming out of the building. We ask that the commission consider a scrubber or a smoke diffuser in the remodel, like every modern restaurant has, including food trucks. There are also idling vehicles waiting in line for more than five minutes. We ask that there are signs to turn vehicles off while waiting with applicable laws displayed. There is also light pollution. Floodlight penetrates our property at night and impacts nocturnal animal patterns. We ask that the commissioner consider eyebrows, light covers, or dimming lights. We also suffer from headlights penetrating our windows and property while patrons are parked. We ask that signs and barriers are erected to prevent headlights. We also have to deal with noise pollution. Speaker noise from ordering has gotten louder and louder and is a constant disturbance. Since we moved there from 2018, it has gotten worse and worse. We ask a consideration to move speakers to the McDonald's side of the building with maximum decibels set by the city of Fortuna. Vehicles also blast loud music, rev engines, and alarms go off. We again ask for signs stating that music should be turned off and that there's no revving of engines. The grease trap is also emptied at 1:00 in the morning, violating city ordinance. We ask that grease traps are emptied during business hours. We also want to be, have the developers consider their noise during the construction and make sure that construction happens during a reasonable time, and we're not waking up to construction at 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning or listening to it at 9:00 o'clock at night. Most importantly, though, is the pollution from encampments. Trash from wrappers blowing in yards, trash from homeless encampments blowing in our yards, communities dump large furniture like mattresses and couches, and these trash from encampment has a constant impact on our properties. We ask that the solution is intensment, intensive enforcement and removal of encampments behind the bushes. Franchise owners and property owners, we ask that they work in partnership with our problem-oriented policing or POP teams and our 900 neighbors to clear loitering, dumping, needle litter, pet waste, and human waste. In addition to human waste, there is human urination and defecation on the Burger King property in view of our 900 neighborhood. This also includes indecent exposure and human waste buildup. We ask that intensive enforcement or loitering and of trespassing be considered. Finally, although we want a privacy hedge to mitigate the sound and light from Burger King, the unwanted consequence of that privacy hedge is that it could create a transient corridor between our fence and their parking lot, increasing the likelihood of encampments. We would ask that Fortuna Boulevard be fenced off so transients can't sneak through. The whole parking lot and alley is a direct access point to the green space behind Burger King. This needs to be mitigated with fencing and hardscaping to prevent encampments and direct migration on the property. We ask that the property owners consider this. We have spoken directly to frontline staff, and they're afraid for their lives and safety to move transients and homeless people along. This is a real threat to our city and our, the safety of our city, and I appreciate the commissioners considering my pleas today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for that. That was extremely informative. A lot, a lot of the things that you brought up, well, I guess we're still in public comment. If there's anyone else.
Can you address which of these concerns would be in our Valley Wick as?
Well, that, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. I don't know how many of these things we can actually address.
Some of this might be building department or public works, but what is it? What can we do?
So basically, the, as I mentioned before, the, the scope of design review is pretty limited to the structure, to the circulation. It does require harmonious transition, so I would say things like the floodlights, potentially moving speakers. A lot of this stuff would be actually more a direct enforcement thing on the conditional use permit itself. So it, the scrubbers would be well beyond what we could consider tonight. Signs, again, those would, you could include a recommended condition of approval that it be evaluated. All of the things that they said, but the noise pollution, the fence off Fortuna Boulevard. It's, it's, it's pretty beyond the scope of what this design review application is for, but you guys are, this body could not say you have to do scrubbers. That would be a condition of approval on a conditional use permit. You could say the floodlights have to have eyebrows. You could talk about signage. The moving speakers, that's a, that's kind of a gray area. I would, I would again say that that's more the conditional use permit itself. But signs about no music, you know, and possibly what we should do here is bring the, or ask the owner if he has any interest in commenting on these things at this time.
Yeah, I would suggest that maybe you would want to make this presentation to a city council meeting. They can address a lot of issues that we can't. And personally, if I was you, I, I'd look into putting in as high a fence as I could get a, a permit for.
It would spend over $10,000 at the time.
And, and I would suggest, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I apologize. Yes, we've, we even bought the vacant lot next to us for $30,000 and put in over $10,000 worth of fencing and are also putting in over 40 trees that grow over 40 to 60 feet because of the grade of the height difference between our neighborhood and Burger King. It's, we can't build a fence legally that's high enough.
You possibly could ask for a variance for a higher fence. That's something that you might be able to look into.
Thank you. And if I may, through the vice chair, I would, I would appreciate if that, lengthy comments like that, if, if they could be sent to staff so that we could do an analysis and evaluate. So what the commission does have the authority to do would be to approve the facade improvements and then continue the item to bring back any other items that are under the design review scope. Once, it's hard to write feverishly and, and do that quick analysis without looking at what exactly is covered within design review here.
And even though he's available, I don't think it's fair at this time to ask the owner to comment.
Agreed. I, I would like to, you know, have an opportunity to, you know, provide this information and, like I said, work on it through that, or potentially, like I said, enforcing of the conditional use permit. Or you could just not act on this item at all and ask for it to be continued.
I personally don't think that the item that we're acting on is going to change the validity of your complaints. It's not going to increase, increase these egregious things, nor is it going to take care of them. So I mean, I, that's my point of view on it. But I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying. I feel for you. I would do anything in my power to help mitigate these conditions that you and your neighbors are suffering, so it wasn't a waste of time coming here tonight.
Thank you.
Absolutely not. Yeah, I completely agree. Please put that in writing. Address it to the entire council, city manager, as many people as you can think of, and that's where you're going to get action, is from the higher food chain in the city. And I, you know what? I'm gonna guess that there's a fair amount of people, even people who could do something, that really don't know the extent of what you're going through, and they're not just ignoring you, they just don't know. So thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you.
It's the only way we can find these things out.
Yeah, so we were very excited to buy an affordable house on a dead end against a wooded area by a creek, and we were shocked to find out what the reality is of living next to a nuisance property to that extent is, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. And since there aren't any other members of the public here, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public comments section and open this up for further discussion if there is any, or if staff has anything they'd like to add.
So for next time-
So for next time, we do open discussion between us and then open to public comment for next time.
Oh, sorry.
It's fine. I was just gonna say, I'm really sorry. I used to walk by Burger King, like just from Kenmark, just a nice roundabout walk. And it kind of scared me that the, the problems that they have there. And I do notice what you're saying. I, I stay away from there a lot. And so I'm sorry. I think, I don't know who we reach out to for the homeless encampment. I think this police would, you'd start there with a complaint. And then hopefully, because they do try to clear out the homeless encampments when they start noticing them, you know. So I think that would help a lot.
I do want to say Detective Taylor has been an enormous partner for us. One of the problems is, is that the Burger King owners and leadership will not call the problem-oriented police problem, so they continue to let it, the nuisance occur on their property. And so it's up to us to call and it's very challenging for the police to be able to come on to a private property and enforce the law.
And with no disrespect to our, our community members, we do need to, since we have already closed public comment, move on with this item as it is. Thank you.
So is there any further discussion from the county staff communication? So.
Number five.
Yeah, I'm just, well, we have to do something. We're either gonna adopt the resolution or we're gonna put it off for later.
Right.
So what, do we have a consensus here amongst all of our members or?
I would recommend that somebody introduce the motion and second, if there is a second, and then go ahead and vote on the item.
Okay, as is.
As is, or you can choose to add any, but it's, it's more design-related modifications that would be acceptable?
I'd like to make a motion that resolution P 2025 3123 be accepted and passed.
I will second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Resolution P 2025 dash 3123, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the city of Fortuna, approving the design review for the Burger King restaurant located at 925 Fortuna Boulevard, assessors parcel number 202-121-052-000, and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Commissioner Bennett?
I vote in favor.
Commissioner Calkins? Commissioner Hawley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nichols?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item five. Planning Commission staff communications.
So I will say that we do have an item for our next, well, hopefully I can get it together. That is the plan because I'm noticing it. So we will have an item for the 25th meeting and so hopefully everyone can be there. It's a, it's another design review, turning a commercial structure into residential uses, so.
Okay. Okay, well, if that's everything, then I guess we'll adjourn.
We need a motion and a second to adjourn, please.
Can I get a motion and a second to adjourn?
There you go.
I make that motion to adjourn.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Always wanted to do that.